I didn't even know it's mine.
Yeah.
Name tags? I don't know.
Will everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. All right. First up on the agenda is the approval of tonight's agenda. Do I have any requests for changes to the agenda? Seeing none, entertain a motion to approve.
So move.
Do I have a second to approve the agenda?
Second.
All those in favor of approving the agenda say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, agenda's approved. Next up are the minutes from the meeting held Monday, April 8th. If anyone remembers that meeting, do you have concerns about the minutes? All right, entertaining motion to approve the minutes. Mr. Chair, I'll move to approve the Planning Commission meeting minutes dated March 25th, 2024. All right.
Second.
Second. All those in favor of approving the minutes say aye.
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 Opposed, minutes are approved. Moving on, we have two public hearings tonight. The first one is for Nexus Innovation Center 2024-04. This is a request for zoning change from office to I-2 on 14.35 acres and a site plan review on 14.35 acres. Would the proponent of the project please come forward? Good evening. If you could state your name for the record and tell us about your request.
Good evening, my name is Josh Buddhist. I'm with Endeavor Development. I live at 5116 Skyline Drive, Eden Prairie, Minnesota. We have prepared a presentation for tonight.
Perfect, we are.
I have to start by saying, it's been a few years since I was last here. Some of you may remember, may not all, but I developed or was part of the development team of what is now Lakes Metana Corporate Center in Eden Prairie. So it's just fun to be back. Nexus at Opus Park, we have updated the name to reflect the location within Opus Park. Located at 6131 Blue Circle Drive in Prairie, Minnesota. A little bit about Endeavor Development. Locally headquartered real estate development investment company. I'm the founder and principal, sole owner. Started about four years ago, since then we've become one of the largest commercial real estate developers in the market. With over 3 million square feet developed to date, mostly here within the Twin Cities, but also in the Des Moines and Milwaukee areas. Some highlights on the project itself, the property is currently a suburban office campus for American Family Insurance. We're proposing a new 186,000 square foot facility, what we call a modern business center, we can touch on what that means later. As you know, we're requesting a rezone that is consistent with city's comprehensive plan. The location is along Highway 62 in Eden Prairie within what most know as Opus Park. It's actually served by Minnetonka Sanitary and Water as well as Blue Circle and Yellow Circle being Minnetonka roads. What we're proposing is a, what we call a front parked, rear loaded, modern business center. Building total's a little under 186,000 square feet. We are utilizing as much of the onsite materials as we possibly can. We're including infrastructure for electric vehicles, preserving trees, treating stormwater on site as required. You see you have a robust landscaping plan, as well as ample parking to accommodate a variety of uses and achieve the ordinances within the city for the proposed zoning. Here you see the elevations and exterior material finished key. I do believe we have some samples, am I right? Yep. The design of the building is meant to appear like a two-story office building. We do that by having glass and what we call signature materials on both the first floor and second floor. Particularly use of paint glazing on second and first floor creates that two-story appearance. That is for the front and sides, and then the rear we have loading with a variety of colors as well. And here you see a rendering. This was generated by our architect Pope. For those of you that are familiar with our project by the name of Arbor Lakes Business Park in Maple Grove. Nexus at Opus Park is designed to expand upon the success we've had within that city and creating what's been an award-winning job creating frankly, just a really well-known and successful project that we want to bring to your city here. These images are from Arbor Lakes Business Park, so what you see here are not renderings, these are actual photos of what exists today. These buildings were built between 2021 and 2023. And inside, these are photos of the variety of uses we have planned for the facility. So those include, but are not limited to, office, light manufacturing, showroom, and warehousing. And to conclude, again, we're requesting a rezone to I-2. This is consistent with the city's comprehensive plan. And as part of our plan, we intend to revitalize an underused site. Reuse as much of the onsite materials as we possibly can and have this be the next project within the city that we can all be very proud of, so. Appreciate your consideration.
Thank you. Any initial questions? Thank you, appreciate it.
Thanks.
Chairman, will you take us through the city's report?
Yes, just briefly, as the applicant had mentioned, it's 185,733 square foot kind of flex building. The floor plans, initial floor plans show about 17,000 square feet of office and then the balance for warehousing. The amount of parking provided onsite plus the kind of future conceptual parking provides quite a bit of flexibility in terms of uses. In terms of warehousing, as the applicant had mentioned, could be warehousing, manufacturing, offices, or any real combination of that. So we're excited about that flexibility afforded on the site. The project has been developed to meet all of the city code standards in terms of the I-2 zoning district. Building materials, roof articulation, facade articulation, parking requirements, landscaping requirements. All designed to meet the requirements of the city code without requiring waivers. And so there, there's not a lot to add in terms of kind of discussion points. It does meet the city code requirements. We're confident that if you notice the back page of the memo, there's a page or so of changes to be made before the city council reviews the project later this, later next month. We're confident that we can get all of those ironed out before that meeting, so there's real no issues from a staff perspective in terms of recommending approval. As noted by the applicant, utilities and access will come from Minnetonka, so Minnetonka will issue the building permit. Excuse me, utility permit for connections from that city and also any improvements in the right-of-way. One of the comments that they had made earlier was the trail along the north side of the property is shown as a sidewalk in some plans. That should be shown as a sidewalk to comply with their requirements. And they also would like to work, continue to work with the applicant on kind of addressing some of their wayfinding goals that they have for the Opus Business Park. And we're confident that will be done before final approval. As I said before, staff is recommending approval of this project with no waivers shown or identified. I'm going to be happy to answer any questions.
Great, I mean, thank you. Any questions for the city?
Very, very briefly, thank you. I'm looking at, on your list of things to do before the city council meeting. L, M, and N on page eight, nine of that document are all asking them to do something. Are you asking that they be required or that they please move the hydrants? It's very nice language.
The tone of our language in the memo doesn't necessarily negate the requirement. For example, L is the cash payment for tree replacement, that's the city code ordinance, that's not a variable.
Oh, I was looking at L, please move all hydrants to the building side of the parking.
Oh, I'm sorry, I was looking at a different L.
The other one, yeah. Sorry. But I get your point.
Yeah.
Other questions?
Questions, yeah.
Commissioner Taylor?
So currently, in Eden Prairie, Jeremy, how many warehouses do we currently have in Eden Prairie?
I don't have a number of exact warehouses. We have, from the assessing department, we categorized industrial uses as warehousing, office, manufacturing, kind of all jumbled together. So I don't have a number of specific just warehousing. We find most warehousing businesses in Eden Prairie are a combination of warehousing and another use.
Okay. And I know this project is more built, designed on, you know, there's no occupants yet or anyone signed up to occupy the space. So it's kind of billed that they will come. Of the current warehouses we have, or the top three, what type of occupancy do we have with those warehouses currently?
I believe the vast majority of our industrial space, again, I don't have a breakdown for just warehousing. But the vast majority of our industrial space is occupied. There's maybe three or four buildings completely vacant in the industrial classification. And the rest of them are occupied, or at least mostly occupied.
Thank you. Other questions for the city?
I have a question.
Mr. Chair.
Just for the drawings, I didn't see any loading docks. Are there expect, I assume there's loading docks for light industrial there?
Yes, on the north side of the building is, that's where the loading dock doors will be.
I drove by there earlier and it's, I know it's a one-way road and logistically, I don't know how that would look like with semis going through there. I haven't seen too many semis drive through there, obviously they don't come when I drive by. But are there any concerns with it being a one-way and being able to get in there and getting out?
No, not from an access perspective.
Okay.
Mr. Chair? Yeah, Commissioner Farr.
Yeah. Add me on to the, maybe the one-way traffic thing. The center driveway that's there now, you're widening it. Just as the staff, is that driveway with meeting city standards, it looks like extra wide? And I'm not sure if it needed to be extra wide for any particular reason?
I believe that that has not been identified as something that does not beat the code and is likely necessary for the turning movements. If you look on the site plan on the screen, the extreme west drive and this extreme east drive, while not dedicated solely for personal vehicles, that's the likely entrance for those type of vehicles and then the truck would be from the center. But I could certainly defer that to the applicant.
Okay, maybe later if they come up, they can address that, that's fine. And then, do you have to make any parking assumptions for a potential second-floor mezzanine? Noticed in their design and at their Arbor Lakes facility, they have some two-story mezzanines in their corner offices and they're accommodating with some second-floor windows designs. I'm okay with the parking as it is, but I was just curious if you have to take that into account?
We did not in this situation. We certainly could, but what would trigger, if you look at a mezzanine, is that may impact the floor area ratio. Which I don't know what, there's a cap of that that doesn't allow for waiver, and I think we're pretty close to that. So that's why we're not anticipating a second-floor mezzanine at this stage.
You're not, okay.
We're not.
All right, would there be a separate process that they would have to go through if they found a tenant?
Perhaps, especially if it triggers a waiver from a floor area ratio or something like that.
All right, all right, thanks.
Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Duncan.
Just a couple of questions, actually, I have three of them, pretty easy though. So generally, are these type of conditions, being this is my second meeting, is it common for this type of, or this many of conditions to be necessary before it goes to the city council?
Not typically. Typically, these, most of these are kind of worked out through the development review process and you get a pretty clean project. We're sensitive to the timing here and trying to hit certain council meeting schedules. And so that's why we're a little bit more receptive to work in progress type of situation. If these were any debatable questions or debatable comments, or the applicant didn't agree to anything, we'd have probably a different reaction.
Okay, thank you. The second question I have is regarding Minnetonka's comments. I think I read in the report that they were attached, but I didn't see them in the packet unless I missed them. Just looking at the access, as you mentioned, would that be the city of Minnetonka's access guidelines and their driveway requirements? Because it's accessing a Minnetonka road, or would that be something that Eden Prairie has comment on? I guess I'm just curious what their comments are in regards to changing the access.
It would be their requirements, because it's worked within their right-of-way in terms of width. They did not comment on the driveway width, they've commented on the trail question and improvements or landscaping within the right-of-way. They had some comments there, and I apologize for not including that in the packet if it wasn't in there. But their comments were related to those, those type of issues, not the number of accesses here.
Okay, so we would assume that they meet the access guidelines or they didn't have any concerns about changing the access from, was it two to three?
That would be the assumption, yes.
Okay, last question, I promise. I think this is a very attractive building, very fond of the Arbor Lakes development. I'm curious, though, how the painting works. Can you describe that or have the applicant describe that? About how the painting works in conjunction with the windows? Maybe I'm just not clear on, is there a painting that looks like a window, but it's not really a window, right?
Correct. Do you want to see the?
Yeah, that'd be great.
Yeah. Were you able to pull that up?
Yeah.
So, let's start with the paint samples on the right, you have pavilion beige and I believe it's iron ore, I call it charcoal. So we use that charcoal paint to look like glass from afar. So when you look on the left side, under elevations, I wish I could zoom in, but that charcoal color is what you're seeing, that is paint.
Okay, and the gray is the window, correct?
Correct, so the best way to decipher between the two is if you look at the glass at the main entrances, that's kind of a light blue clearish, that's your glass color. Yep, and then your darker color is your charcoal-colored paint.
Okay.
So what's happened in Maple Grove is, from afar, and actually from very close in, it really does appear like, it's really an extension of the glass, it's meant to trick the eye, that's what we're aiming to do.
And you're actually painting the stone-type material?
It's smooth concrete.
Concrete, okay.
Yep.
Okay, very good, thank you.
I wanted to address it because there was a member of city council who, this is in Maple Grove, who came back later. So I'm glad you brought it up.
I appreciate that, yeah, it's very attractive looking. Thank you, thank you, Chair.
Any other questions for the city? Okay, this is a public hearing, if anyone would like to come forward and speak for or against this project, please do so now. Not seeing any entertaining motion to close the public hearing.
So move.
All right, do I have a second to close the public hearing?
Second.
Second, everyone in favor of closing the public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, public hearing is closed. Any further discussion on this request?
Mr. Chair? Yeah, I like the project a lot, I think it's well-designed, it's certainly a change in use. It's topographically very challenging site. I don't know if you drove past it, but there's a significant grade change from one side to the other and made it difficult to do some civil engineering on it, I know with drainage and topography and fitting in our ponds and everything like that. So given the program, I think they nestled it in there fairly well. This would have probably been a brand-new raw site, you know, I think we would have scratched our head a little bit more. But any redevelopment on this site would have the same trouble, whether it was multiple buildings or one building, so. I think they did a good job with it.
Mr. Chair?
Yes. Commissioner Farr.
Yeah, I would agree with Commissioner Farr, it's a very good project, very good timing. The industrial market is still very hot, so I think it's an excellent design and I'm in favor of it.
Further comments or is someone, or discussion, or someone want to make a motion?
Mr. Chair? I would move to make a motion to recommend approval for the zoning change from office to I-2 and site plan review, both on the 14.35 acres as represented in the May 28th, 2024 staff report.
I have a motion from Commissioner Duncan, do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Weber, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, would anyone like to abstain? Okay, great, thank you. Looks great, thanks for sending no waivers to, made it easy for us. All right. One more public hearing this evening, this is a code amendment. Landscaping in the RM 2.5 zoning district, request for amendment to city code, chapter 11, section 11.42, subdivision 5. Jeremy, will you be walking us through this?
Yes, I will. I had a presentation, but my computer just stopped, so that's going to be interesting. Just briefly, in the last seven years or so, the city has approved eight different projects in the RM 2.5 zoning district. And the RM 2.5 zoning district is our zoning district primarily, or that most of our attached family projects kind of live. The condominiums, the apartment buildings, those sort of things. So the last seven years, we've had eight of those. Six of those have received waivers, have requested and received waivers for landscaping, because they didn't meet the landscaping requirements. I'm going to pause for a second, there's a difference between the landscaping requirements based on the building and the landscaping requirements or the tree replacement requirements. They're two separate things. The landscaping requirements for a building are based on the size of the building, so the bigger the building, the more landscaping you have. We just saw the Nexus Innovation Center, or whatever they're calling it today. That had quite a bit of landscaping requirements because it's a large building. In the RM 2.5 and our attached family projects, in certain situations, the building is not too big for the site, but there was not a lot of space to put trees. Trees require quite a bit of surface area to be successful and healthy throughout their life. And so in those projects, we granted waivers, reducing the amount of landscaping required on that property from a code perspective. Six, or 75% of those projects. Of those six projects that we granted waivers, five of them had a floor area ratio of greater or one or greater. Which means that the floor area of that project was at a ratio of, it was larger than basically the size of the site. And so that trend kind of got us thinking about what should we do to a code to maybe address the concern that we're just removing or waiving our landscaping requirements. And so what we've done, taken a look at those projects, which I've summarized in the memo. What we're proposing is an ordinance amendment that when you're in the RM 2.5 zoning district and your project is, has a floor area ratio greater than one, up to 50% of the caliber inch requirement can be used by, can be used for shrubbery or perennials or flower beds. You know, what we're trying to do is inject some color, texture, variety in our landscaping plans while not kind of giving away all of the requirements in terms of our landscaping. So what this ordinance does is allows that flexibility on these specific projects with the hope of these projects can maybe meet the landscaping requirements onsite while also supporting the overall kind of design guidelines that we have in place in terms of landscaping. Excuse me, where we're looking for, like I said before, color, texture, a variety of materials, seasonal interest throughout the year, again, from color, texture. And so we think that this change to the code allows that flexibility to help further our goals kind of moving forward without compromising the overall kind of goal of our landscaping requirements. It's not a, we don't have a lot of projects, as I said before, we have, what, eight in the last seven years? But there's enough to notice a trend and we want to try to remove barriers to development and redevelopment and also kind of overall supporting our vision for what we're looking at as a city. So with that, staff is recommending approval of a text amendment that would change or allow some flexibility from the RM, excuse me, from the landscaping in the RM 2.5 zoning district in certain situations.
And you said six of the last eight? Had a waiver request?
In the last seven years, we had eight projects, six of those projects received waivers for landscaping.
Thanks. Questions for the city?
Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Farr.
Questions or comments or both?
Either or.
Okay, thanks. Couple thoughts, I noticed that the metric that you said where we compute landscaping requirements is both for tree preservation, but then also based on the floor area of the project, basically the floor area ratio. And, you know, landscaping in general is very relative to the building's image on the first two stories, let's just say. If we're at a four-story versus a five-story, there's no difference to what happens to the landscape visual, you just see more building climbing up to the clouds. So I'm wondering if the basis of requirement should be more on just the floor area, the base floor area as we call it, not the floor area ratio. Because the height provides a variable that really doesn't impact what we're trying to regulate here, which is the landscaping. And I don't want to put a tumble on this, but that just seems like a better metric to use, again, because we're looking at it in site plan form, three-dimensionally, again. Height's the variable here that just doesn't make its way into landscaping, in my opinion. Not that I don't go along with this, because I think it's a good idea. My second comment is, we come across projects like tonight, and I think a fair amount of them that have come through our commission in the last few years, do have, just by virtue of the property, some undisturbed preserved area off to the side. I don't know if you noticed on tonight's site plan, there was that large acreage further west that wasn't disturbed with the American Family Project, and they're not disturbing it either. It's topographically challenging. You know, we saw that when the school district came through with the Unfeet project a couple of months ago. And so it seems like there's a fair amount of those, and I don't know if it's fair to give away the show, and I'm not saying we are giving away the show by counting all of those. You just see more building climbing up to the clouds. So I'm wondering if the basis of requirements should be more on just the floor area, the base floor area, as we call it, not the floor area ratio, because the height provides a variable that really doesn't impact what we're trying to regulate here, which is the landscaping. And I don't want to put a tumble on this, but that just seems like a better metric to use, again, because we're looking at it in site plan form, three-dimensionally, again. The height's the variable here that just doesn't make its way into landscaping, in my opinion. Not that I don't go along with this because I think it's a good idea. My second comment is, we come across projects like tonight, and I think a fair amount of them that have come through our commission in the last few years, do have, just by virtue of the property, some undisturbed, preserved area off to the side. I don't know if you noticed on tonight's site plan, there was that large acreage further west that wasn't disturbed with the American Family project, and they're not disturbing it either. It's topographically challenging. You know, we saw that when the school district came through with the UNFEI project a couple months ago. And so it seems like there's a fair amount of those. And I don't know if it's fair to give away the show, and I'm not saying we are, giving away the show by counting all of those larger trees that are in that stand, that forest that's out there. And we don't want a naked building just because they've met the criteria up on the hill. Do you know what I mean? We need to distribute the required landscaping around the building, regardless of whether they saved an acre and a half off to the side that's really nice-looking. So I just want to infuse those two thoughts into this process and see if that has any traction.
Chair. So maybe take the first question or the first comment first.
Sure.
We chose floor area ratio because the examples that we identified, all of them were more than one-story buildings. And so you're correct in the sense that the amount of usable space to put landscaping was the same. The requirement for landscaping was much greater than if it was a single level or a two-story building.
Right.
Because as you get more. And so they had, in theory, they have more space, they have the same amount of space to put less landscaping on a one- or two-story building, whereas if you have a three- or four-story building, you have much, you have the same amount of space, we have a much greater landscaping requirement. And that's what we found in those examples. And so that's why we went with the overall floor area ratio versus a base area ratio, just based on our experience. We can certainly continue to monitor it, but we didn't see that as a problem because we didn't see that pattern of waivers in the past across all zoning districts. We're really just examining the RM 2.5 zoning district. To address your second question, which was, like the Nexus building, for example, they had, let's say, an acre, acre and a half of space that they didn't touch. There's heavily landscaped, heavily vegetated, forested. They're not touching that area. We don't see it happening where they tear down existing trees to put more trees in. We could examine whether or not existing tree stands could help address a landscaping component. I know we do that in the TOD zoning district, but we can certainly look and see if that should expand beyond the TOD zoning district. You know, where the existing landscaping provides a credit, for example, right, of the landscaping requirements.
Sure, sure. Maybe my question could be more pointed. Could they get enough credit for an acre, acre and a half of forest to eliminate any requirement for perimeter plantings?
Currently, no. And I don't think we want to go there. To your point is, we don't want all the landscaping tucked into one corner out of the way, and you have a bear in sight.
That's exactly what I was concerned about.
So that's why there's the two requirements, the tree preservation and the landscaping requirement. And in our, the design guidelines from a landscaping perspective, do look at or look for landscaping kind of scattered in a logical manner throughout the site, not just picked and choose, you know, in the backyard or something like that.
Sure, sure. Thank you.
Other questions or comments? This is a public hearing. If anyone would like to come forward and speak for or against this code amendment, please do so now. Seeing done, I'd entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Motion to close. Do I have a second?
Second.
And a second. All those in favor of closing the public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Public hearing is closed. Further discussion on this request?
Mr. Chair, I would just comment that I think that these seven items are pretty creative and give options for being flexible and allowing variation of trees versus shrubbery, so I would be in favor of it.
Thank you, Commissioner Duncan. Not seeing any burning discussion or concerns. Would someone like to make a motion?
I will make a motion to recommend approval to amend code amendment landscaping in the RM 2.5 zoning district as represented in the May 28, 2024 staff report.
All right. A motion from Commissioner Weber. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Groth. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Would anyone like to abstain? Okay. Thank you for walking us through that. Jeremy, do you have any planners' reports tonight?
Not, not tonight.
Any members' reports? Would anyone like to make a motion that requires a game five?
Don't move.
Seconded. Seconded. All right. All those in favor, all right. All right. Motion to close the, adjourn the meeting?
I'll motion.
All right. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
All right. All those in favor, adjourn the meeting, say aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.